Now it should see that little number, there you go. Yeah, that's good.
Is Dennis gonna be here or no?
He is not.
Are you ready to start?
Just one minute till. Hey, thanks, wait a minute, I can't come off my batteries.
Yeah.
On yours?
I'm not on mine too. She's not ready yet.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Put my battery in right.
Does it work?
Oh yeah, it just, you have to put the batteries in right. Roll call, Rita Bonferrini here. Penny Van Alstine.
Here.
Lorraine Crocco. John Bryson.
Here.
Alright, so we're here for the February 10th, J Township Sewer Authority. Um, is there anybody that would like to make a comment? Brian? Friday, we're waiting till we call him up. Do you have anything, do you have anything to say?
No, I guess I do. At the previous meeting, Christine DeVosse asked a question about, uh, well, I'll just read it. At the January 13th meeting, the J Township Sewer Authority, Christine DeVosse requested each board member state the position concerning supervisors' duty infomart to take over the management of the water and sewer system. The following responses were provided by the sewer authority and board members. Lisa put a synopsis, what the responses were. I know Lori, she had concerns about lead. What are the sources of lead, the drinking water?
What are the sources?
Yeah.
I don't know what's going wrong with the water company and what it's in litigation or what is going on with our water, but here's the thing, I think we would all want safe water for this community.
But lead is not a problem, I don't believe. If there's lead in the water.
Then what was the letter received?
Could I stop please? If there's lead in the water, it's probably coming from the older homes.
Um, did you receive a letter? I didn't receive any information.
I didn't receive anything.
I didn't either, I read it from someone else. And it is posted maybe in the post office in force and maybe at the drugstore. There was a letter that went out about the lead. I don't know anything about the water.
See, that's, that's the bad thing, getting non-factual information though. It causes panic in the community and that shouldn't be done. It shouldn't be done.
There was a letter that went out.
Who sent it?
Did it come from the water company?
The water company that sent that.
Did it come from the water company?
Sent that letter out because when they changed the chemical at the well, when we was on the well for the drought, that's when that all come about. And I told this story five times now. When they changed the chemical, and when they changed chemicals, they changed through well. And then we was in drought, okay? So, the water table was really weighed out. So, when they change a chemical, what that does, it cleans out the old chemical and then it creates a coating over the new, over the pipes. And that's what that's made to do, okay? So, they should have never done it. They should have never done it in the drought. Period, because, and that's what created the dirty water in the lead, in a couple of certain people's houses. It wasn't even the water, it was in certain houses.
Right, whatever they put in the water, you're saying it was our fault from the house that we had this dirty water?
Cause I had the dirty water. Not necessarily your fault.
It's not your fault.
Yeah.
I don't think we wanna go into this, I don't think we wanna say what was written, what shouldn't have been written, what's going on, yes.
It was supposed to be put in.
It's a corrosion inhibitor, but there wasn't enough water at the time to flush the system. They should have never did it at that time.
I'm breathing slowly.
That's why you got the letter.
I never got a letter, I read the letter.
Well, I mean, everybody should have gone, everybody should have gone.
And I don't, I don't make phone calls either. But I do pay my bill every month.
Yeah, but I mean, that's why.
But here's the thing, there's no panic, we know that our water, our water is not safe. We do not have safe drinking water.
No, no, no.
Well, we don't, but you know what?
That's not true.
I'm not giving.
That's not true at all, Lori.
No, no, that's not true.
That's not true at all.
They never tell you that stuff, they don't tell them.
I mean, they're sending reports to DEP every day.
And those report, well, I'm not gonna say.
You think they're boss about you?
Yeah.
I don't think they are. There's some big liability that goes around.
There is some big liability.
Big liability.
And I don't think we should be discussing that here.
Well, I think the change is very important.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Excuse me, is there anything else, Bob, about the comments? The three minutes are up, but I'll start another three minutes of the comments.
No, I'm not gonna make any more time on.
Alright.
I'd like to add a little bit to that, that corrosion inhibitor that they put in the system is demanded by EPA and DEP. And even though it doesn't really do a good job, from what I hear, but it's cleaning the older pipes out of older homes. But it's mandatory to put this stuff in, but the feds and the state guys also.
And we're in compliance with everything, aren't we? Everything with our water is in compliance, you're right, right? We have nothing outstanding that comes to our water. I'm looking at yours, yep, because you're telling me this was going in and you're saying that our water, there's no problem with our water, so you're saying everything with our water is in compliance.
Yeah, this, this is not going in right now at all. It hasn't been in for the well, it was put into the well system.
When is y'all's meeting, when's the water board meeting?
Yeah, that's when this should be discussed.
This should be discussed, okay?
So, let's bypass, last meeting ran away with all the other brouhaha, now this one's running with water. Let's get with our sewage issues, cause we have major issues that need to be resolved. That just happened the last day or two. Cory and Jim have been busting their humps, so let's just rotate around. Mr. Ebert, do you have anything else?
Joe.
Joe, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
I called her mister, sorry.
I'm aware of what you're talking to, too. I was here the day it happened.
Okay.
Alright, so.
Approval of the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's report.
We have regular month, that was for, I'm sorry, for the reorganization, we have two sets of minutes that have to be approved. Reorganization, I'm assuming was the ones we just did. If not, I'll change that, but regular monthly minutes.
I make a motion? I'll make a motion.
Rita?
Everybody approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Treasurer's report, that's me. So, the First Commonwealth Bank, and the balance as of December 31st, 2021 was $27,555.56. The ending balance in the checking as of January 31st, 2022 was $19,915.19. The balance in the capital improvement account, that we used to refer to as the savings account, is as of December 31st, 2021 was $135,713.43. And the balance in the capital improvement account as of January 31st, 2022 was $138,217.96.
Make a motion to approve everything?
Alright, motion.
Thank you.
Second motion, unapproved?
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor?
All in favor.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question, before we move on to the next issue. Does deposit transfer for future expenditures?
Yes.
Where does it get transferred?
Into the First Commonwealth Bank.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
So, where did it come from?
Out of our general fund checking. So, it just goes every month, whatever we bring in, we transfer 2,500 of the income out into the savings.
For any expenditures that play?
Yeah, just out of our regular, yeah, daily account into a savings slash capital expenditure in the event of emergencies. Yep, you're welcome.
Alright, we're gonna do the approval of the bills. Anybody have any questions about that?
Is there any details on item 29 that happened here?
Maybe.
Allegheny Electric Service tripped pumps slash turbo meter.
Yep.
So, Allegheny Electric, down at the force pump station, um, we could not get the right side, which would be pumps number two in the two-stage system, um, we could not get them to run, so we had Matt from Allegheny Electric come down. Checked that out, um, it was a breaker that tripped because there was a power surge. So, we flipped the breaker, tested everything, everything was working fine. And then the turbo meter was at the plant, that was the flow meter.
That's the magnetic flow meter?
Yeah.
That's what we talked about last meeting?
Yep.
Did they figure out what was the problem with the magnetic part?
Um, the magnetic part, it was installed the wrong way. So, the magnets are supposed to go, um, this way, this way, but the magnets were sold up this way, so.
How long were they getting there like that?
Um, probably since it went in, yeah.
Wow.
Did that, did that cause it not to work?
No, um, what he said was there might have been a blockage in there, sitting on top of one of the magnets, so it was just pegging out to 100 and not reading correctly.
So, it was in vertical plane instead of the horizontal?
Correct.
Wow.
I have one more question. What is Nicholas workers, Nicholas directors and officers, what is that?
Five shots.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else with any other questions? Make a motion to approve paid bills?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we received a letter from the Board of Supervisors after our meeting last month. And basically, it says, "On December 16th, 2021, the J Township Supervisors passed a resolution to signify their intention to dissolve the township's water and sewage authority. It will take some time for this process to happen, please keep businesses going as usual. The township solicitors may be in touch with the boards as information and process proceeds. If you have any questions, please contact the township." I did talk to Jeremy, beginning of the week, to ask if there's an itinerary of what's happening, their meeting's not till next week. So, as of right now, their lawyer is moving slowly, trying to get everything situated. One of the biggest problems they say they're having or working on is the million dollar loan we have through the sewage.
That'll have to be passed on to the taxpayers, and that's not a good plan.
No, that's not true.
They need to move slowly.
You don't pass it on to the taxpayers. Who takes liability for the debt?
That's what the lawyer's working on, so that's what they're gonna have, they talked to Jeremy.
Make a financial end of.
These guys.
But right now, the liability is on the authority boards.
That is correct.
So, when they're dissolved, somebody's gotta take all the burden.
That would be the township supervisors. Apparently, there's a plan made and it's in the works, it's not finalized, it'll pay off a fair amount of debt on both the sewage and the water.
When it goes to court, it comes down to each supervisor, huh?
Could.
Depending on the attorney, that's why I say move slowly.
When push comes to shove, it potentially could fall back to the taxing authority of the supervisors.
It could.
Yes, it could.
Let's get it straight.
What, you're sure about that, Joe, get it straight?
It depends on what attorney you talk to.
Well, the law is the law, attorneys do interpret the law, they don't set the law.
It depends on the judge and the attorney, too.
Well, that's it, oops, sorry.
What did you say while I did that?
I said the judge makes the interpretation of the law or the jury in the jury trial.
That's true. I can't imagine this going to the jury trial.
Well, I can't either. But once again, attorneys don't, they plead the case.
That's all.
Well, that's where it stands right now, so as the letter stated, if you have questions, just speak to Mr. Ebert, he's at the township meeting. Alright, delinquencies?
Yeah, delinquencies, 27 letters were sent out, that went to 27 homes, there was actually 32 letters sent out, but some of them are doubled because of renters, so some go to renters, some go to the homeowner. Since I've sent them out, I've collected 2,500 in delinquent accounts. And several of the customers that have contacted me, that have arranged for payment, I've offered the program, all of the boards should have a copy of the paper, that is LIHWAP. It is for low-income household water assistance program, it's not just for water bills, it is for sewage bills as well. It's available to renters and homeowners, which most programs are usually not available to homeowners, but this is, and it will start in January 4th. We have to apply for it as an authority, become approved, and then, once we do, I'm waiting for my letter from the IRS, and then once I have that, we'll be approved for that, so I've given quite a few of them out to people that have come in and made partial payments.
Awesome.
Okay?
Cory?
Alright, so, we recently just had a fuel spill into the main sewer plant. So, we first noticed the smell at the plant, February the 8th, um, on Tuesday, it was around 10 o'clock. So, I ran around the stations, checked to see if I got any flowing fuel on top of the stations, on the clear walls. There was nothing, so I figured that it would be in the grabbing line somewhere. So, I called around to, um, Fridays and also, uh, up at the Valley Farm, to see when they got their deliveries or anything, to see if anything was obvious that it was going in the sewer line. So then, um, basically, all day, um, on the 8th, I was trying to get all the just lined up for a back service that actually suck it in and out of the plant, the top layer. Um, I left my mixers off, my blowers off, so nothing got stirred into the plant too much. So then, the next morning, on the 10th, I ran around, well, on the 9th, ran around to all the manholes in the valley here that's on the grabbing line. First, I started out in Virgil, checked them manholes, flipped them open, I'd smell down inside there, see if I could smell any fuel or any remnants of fuel. And I got the most, well, the strongest scent came from down here by the post office. And then, I started looking around down in this bottom here. And I was looking for fuel tanks then, after that. So, the only houses that have fuel tanks down in this bottom are right here on Apple Street, and there's one right down by the hotel. So, I ran back behind the trailer there, um, to see what was going on, see if the tank was leaking or anything. And we noticed there was a leak in the tank. So, I notified you guys again, called them back and told them that the tank was empty. And Jeremy Rippey said that it was recently just filled. So, I took the lid off the tank, tank was completely going dry. So, I'm looking around, and then I cracked the lateral, looking down into the trap, and it was just red fuel oil all through the trap. So, it just went right down through our lateral, straight in the main line, went right into the head and the, and the plant, that's.
This, this color was, right?
Yeah, like, like a pinkish red. Fuel oil, copper and diesel down.
This was from the trailer?
Yes.
Some of these elevated tubes?
Yep.
How would the oil escape the tank and get into the sewer line?
Um, all I found was a copper line, there's metal skirting around the trailer. The only thing I could figure out was maybe there was a crack in that copper line, or something happened.
That stuff gets dug up, all that's gonna have to be dug up, because that's saturated not only arc over into the sewage area, all around that trailer, underneath that trailer, it's completely saturated, so all that's gonna need to be dug up.
Is this the place that just got sold?
Yep.
Yep.
I thought it was a house, is it a double wide or something?
It's a double wide.
Okay, alright.
Would the, the metal skirting have moved in and out with the wind to rub a hole through the copper line?
That's very well possible.
Did you check the line where it enters the skirt? Was there a hole, like, was there a drip?
I mean, you could see where the line was rubbed against the side.
There was none dripping then, there was no more dripping.
Yeah, the, the tank was empty.
I guess the question is, so, the sewer line should be sealed, how did the oil get into the sewer line?
I believe that there's a, there's an air breather underneath the trailer for the lateral, the sewer lateral.
Okay.
So, that was open underneath the trailer, and basically, if it's like an inch under the ground, it's just gonna go right into the line.
So, the breather didn't come up above grade?
It very well could have been.
Cause somebody should take a good hard look at the sewer system, too.
Yeah, well, I say have a feeling that every, that whole place is going to be dug up very well, because that whole, everything's saturated. They said when it's done.
I wanted to know if one of these guys, just if they wanted to get it, like, refilled or something, or something happened of that nature.
Yeah, if they refill it, then it's going.
Just to make sure that we're clear, that's.
That's all good. Is that all gonna need to be dug up and looked at the pipes and everything, or?
Um, I don't know, it all depends. Uh, how many gallons were pumped out by McCutcheon?
Um, there was 300.
Was that your question? Couldn't have been, it's only a 275 tank, was that your question?
There was 300 gallons pumped out of the intubate hole, and then also, in all, with all the gallons. So, it was 200.
2,000.
Uh, 2,097.
What else it contaminated that you pulled out?
Yeah.
They took 2,000, and then they were gonna separate it from there and take it to another facility.
So, basically, we just sucked everything off the top, the top layer.
But actual fuel, I mean, I would say, I would say that most of that fuel, I would say that 95% of that fuel went down into your sewage system. Very little was laying on top there, um, not even enough to be a report of a spill.
Oh, really? Wow.
What is the minimum gallons, uh, to report?
It's about 5 to 10 gallon. But the way the, the property is there, it all went down in its system.
Well, the problem was your air breather, they're talking about ready to grow level or went right down that pipe into the sewage system.
So, the cost to the sewage company will be what?
Well, I contacted the attorney today, and I contacted McCutcheon, um, you know, I, well, I, a couple of reasons I'm saying that about the attorney is because, when I talked to McCutcheon, they said that the cost for the tanker to go was anywhere between $5,200 to $5,300. So, he didn't have the final bill, but that was just to give you an estimate for tonight.
Then there'd be a separation cost.
Yeah, well, he, that was the cost that he, that was the project manager had given me that, so if there is more, then there's more. I don't know.
Yeah.
He didn't make it sound like there was gonna be more, so, but I don't know, that, yes or no. But I did talk to our attorney, just to see what, you know, what would our best option be for us to get compensated for that, and he said probably the best way would be to contact our insurance company, have the insurance company go into action, and let the insurance company handle it from there on out then. So, I put a call into our insurance company today and left a message for our agent, but.
Is that also Nicholas?
Yeah.
So, you feel like that's the homeowner's fault?
No, it, well, it's really nobody's fault, per se.
I, I, no, it's not a homeowner's fault if a pipe is rubbing against, no.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
No.
Yeah, no.
But basically, what, um, what my, my idea was to make sure our butts are covered, coming and going. I asked Cory to make sure he had one heck of a paper trail of everything he did. He took his pictures, he made, he did, both of them did that outstanding job, running around with their heads cut off, trying to get things situated.
DEP was notified as soon as we smelled the fuel oil in the truck.
They were on point, so, we just wanted, I basically wanted to have a paper trail that if anything should happen in the future, we know what was done versus ignoring it and thinking, no big deal, and then come back two, three months later, and everybody scrambling, trying to get stuff done. So, I told Cory to make sure to get all this paperwork, all phone calls, everybody to talk to, letter from the DEP, the whole kit and caboodle. Make sure everything's all squared away for this situation.
And I do have a bunch of pictures in there that I was supposed to print out, that Cory asked me to, and I did not, sorry Cory.
I mean, just a suggestion, and view what happened here, how many fuel oil storage tanks for residential heat are there in the, could potentially contaminate the system, maybe they should catalog where these are at, so in the future, if you get oil in there, you have an idea where to start to look.
Well, that would be, huh? Alright.
Alright, Holly's report, we got that, nothing major. There's nothing further you need to bring up about the situation, anything going on?
Um, I don't know, everything's pretty well under control now.
What about the buying of the bugs you were talking about?
The bugs, SVR number one, um, I think SVR number one is pretty well dead, but SVR number two, we still have vital life. Very low, but we do have vital life.
When, when would we need to get bugs in there?
So, I notified Holly about the bug situation, and basically, what she brought up was all five gallon buckets from either, either Houston Township or Benzett Township. Basically, throw two five gallon buckets in each SVR to jumpstart the vital life again. I don't really think that's gonna do a whole lot, but.
It's a starting truck load.
So, I'm, I'm just taking her word for it right now, since she's lead operator, but if we need to add more bugs, I'm gonna notify her and.
Okay, you have your resource for that, right?
Yeah.
You have your brush, okay.
When do you plan to do that?
Um, today, we actually put a five gallon bucket in.
Oh, you did already, true.
We put two five gallon buckets in, uh, well, we put one in SVR one and one in SVR two.
Now we gotta say, munga, munga, munga.
Well, I don't think a five gallon bucket's gonna cut it through, I'm sorry, it's not, I think we need to get it.
How much, how much do you normally put in it when you start? Do you, do you have to know?
Never done it before.
No.
Holly hasn't even given you an idea of how much we might need or anything?
She just said try the five gallon bucket, see if that'll give it a jumpstart, like, that's, that's about it.
I'm gonna say, I highly doubt, you seem concerned, I highly doubt five gallon buckets can start anything.
Is there still a lot of oil in there?
Um, for the most part, we tried to suck as much as we could off the top, but there's still.
Residual oil. There's residual, it will kill the new bugs you put in.
But now you're running the aerators and the messers and everything?
Everything's back in the oil, yep.
Did you ever ask Holly if there's any additive you can put in there to break the oil down, or DEP, DEP would be a better place? Remember doing Jeff Mike, that's some insight you did.
I don't know, I think the situation as it is right now, you just may want to doctor it with your bugs and keep adding it, because anything that you're gonna use to dissipate that oil, well, it's probably gonna have a negative effect on the bugs.
Right.
And you would like to think that DEP, DEP would have said something when you brought it up?
It'll thrive and out.
You know, that there's something you can utilize to break it down or gather it up.
Now, they do make defomers and de-oilers, but I have no clue, I'd have to look into it.
They were on the phone quite a bit, the other day, jumping through hoops, trying to get it all situated.
Yeah, what it sounds like, it sounds like you need to empty completely and steam clean it out to get all your residual off of the walls or whatever. And start from zero, start from zero.
How long would, have you ever done that? How long did that take?
We had this guy up here last month.
How long would it take? If you empty it out, clean it out?
Not how long it would take, how much it would cost.
Yeah.
See, and this is, this is, this is why I wanted a paper trail, to make sure-
It's almost like a leak joint, actually.
Yeah. I mean, my suggestion probably would have been to go more on a truckload.
Uh, yeah, the five gallon buckets, yeah.
Get Bjork's to pull a truckload from a neighboring plant.
I was thinking even like half a backdrop, yeah.
We were thinking, chat a little more in one direction.
Yeah, just grab a load from a neighboring plant.
Then check it out on Monday, get costs and see what, turn around.
Can you now, they used to have a device at Sludge Judge?
Yeah, we still have one of those.
You still have one, and you, uh, I guess it's a little bit too early, but you can't probably foresee or you can't detect an accumulation of sludge in the bottom of it, gotta do it a week or so.
Yeah.
Oil has to eventually come to the surface, has to, that's how it works.
To measure the suspended solids, you're using an optical device, you don't-
Suspended? Yes, suspended solids, yeah.
Okay. Exactly, are you seeing more suspended solids?
Yeah, we're seeing a little suspended solids. That and ball, and-
More ball, yeah. You know, can we talk to DEP, ask them about all of them?
Huh?
Next, you know, so what helped clean it, the diesel fuel. Cause all of well, it's everything, any accounting can tell you that.
Alright, we're gonna do the old business before we move into the new.
Hello.
So, the last meeting, we discussed Cory's status. Are we, do you want me to bring up Holly's letter then, or later on?
Um, it's down in the, it's down in the lineup here of the new business, so-
Okay.
We can just go down first.
Alright, discuss, we discussed Cory's application, everything's moving along, are there any glitches or anything going, happening?
Nope, haven't heard anything, everything's fine.
Awesome, um, DE Board reviewed all information and must wait for DE Board to approve, at which time the appropriate operator certificate will be issued. Sometime in February, it's all pending. Yes, you look like you wanna say something.
Cory?
No? Alright, so that's all old business. New business, Fridays.
What time of the discipline, huh? Alright, so several, uh, several meetings back, you asked me to look into the situation that occurred several months ago with the Scattered Town Pump Station where some, a discharge occurred that resulted in something very similar to this week's event. Um, so I did talk to Jeff Friday, um, about a month ago, and uh, Jeff is explaining to me that there was a situation not related to a vehicle cleaning. So this was not a vehicle cleaning situation, it was a cleaning of those portable two hundred and seventy-five gallon totes-
Okay.
That came in, he was, uh, doing some recycling of those to haul potable water for, or, or non-potable water. Um, I think one of his maintenance men cleaned out the totes using the same floor drains that's in his facility. That material was not a hydrocarbon based material. So the oil-water separator that's installed in this facility as part of the industrial pretreatment program was not a function, cause it's not, it was not a hydrocarbon based, um, uh, solution that would separate, would not float on the water. So it did end up in the Scattered Town Pump Station. Uh, I believe the Scattered Town Pump Station was pumped out, so I, I guess it was a lesson learned that Jeff won't do that again, but it was not related to the inadequacy of facilities. He does have the facilities, um, available at the truck wash to be in compliance with the industrial pretreatment obligations of the authority. Now, the unfortunate thing is those drawings should be here on file with the township, so there was a breakdown, um, maybe it was some paperwork. Um, Jeff has said they are available at Penn Safe, uh, as a, is that a permitting agency?
It is.
Okay. Uh, part of his permitting agency is Penn Safe, or through Mike DeLulo as his contractor, so we still should get a copy of the, um, drawings so that we can have them on record and validate that the oil-water separator that should have been installed isn't still. So there was no, no lack of facilities to be in compliance.
Was that required by code, the oil-water separator, when you built the building?
It would be required by your own rules and regulations to have industrial pretreatment. And-
That would be by the sewage authorities' rules regularly?
Yeah, the, the sewage authorities as well, as I'm sure Jeff has other permits with the DEP that he has to be in compliance with as well.
Has to be a permit with the township, agreed with the township.
Yeah. There's a booklet that was written in two thousand and one, I don't know, it's probably about that big.
Rules and regulations.
But you gotta get that read a chunk.
There's like six chapters for industrial-
Yeah, there you go.
For industrial waste with township, so, and it needs to be permitted. In fact, I, I never notice, except for car washes, that's all this should really take. Does that apply to only new construction? This applies to any construction in this-
Any construction, yeah.
It has to be through, it's come to the board, the board got to look it over, you know, the system should have been engineered. Yeah, but industrial waste, you really shouldn't take it all. Now, like a car wash, it's metered, you know what I mean, it's going through a meter, so it's metered. But a regular floor drain, it shouldn't be hooked up to a- Hooked up to what? Hooked to the soakers. A floor drain, a car wash, because it's metered and that, but most, most, you know, floor drains, you gotta hook up- Says you have to have a water, water, uh, oil separate, I don't know. Now, you gotta read the rules and regulations all the way through, through to see what you need to do. I mean, there's like six, seven pages in here of a lot of stuff you need to do. I mean, I would-
What is the order of difference?
Yeah.
Is there a breakdown in the administration of, of the activity? Yes, I think there is a, is an administrative breakdown between the permits, what was built, what's on file.
Yes.
That, that's a lesson learned for us.
Yeah, that's what we found out. So we can get the drawings from Mike DeLulo, would you be able to write a letter requesting that, Ms. Lisa? Okay. Alright, so that way we can get it in our file and hopefully any future issues we-
Jeff, do you have anything else to add that?
Yeah, one thing I didn't-
Jeff, Jeff was, told me he was gonna come to the meeting before we had the incident this week, so- He got, he got the double whammy in there.
So, uh, long story short, what had happened was I acquired three totes to put fresh water in, because I was planting grass at my house and we're going to a time where I need water. One of the totes out of the three must have had a substance at the bottom.
Okay.
Um, my guy, I don't, we don't, no, I, I have no idea what it was.
Okay.
My guy put it, he, he washed the totes out in the wash bay, it went down. The guy from the sewage authority came up, contacted myself and, and my mechanic down at the shop and asked us if we had released anything. He said, no, nothing at all. And, uh, when they brought it back up, my guy came out of the wash bay and said, oh, that's the stuff that just went down there. Wow, called John Bjork, came down, pumped it out.
That was relatively quickly, they were single.
Yes.
What did it look like, the fluid, when the well, or what? What did it look like?
It was like a blue and substance.
Black?
Yeah, blue and black.
But, I mean, e- everything down at my shop is taken care of. All, all of our motor oil goes into a tank, we take it down to Lily Leonard, he burns it in his, in his burner. All of our, you know, all of our radiator fluid, stuff like that, it's all pulled out, taken care of.
So this was just a little fluke?
This was something that had nothing to do with the day-to-day operations of my company.
Okay.
That was something a little bit more along the lines of personal matter, if I was washing the stuff out of my house in Burnedale, we would have been getting the same haul from Bravo.
Yeah, true.
That's all.
Okay, great, awesome. Alright, so next are the grinder pumps that we acquired back from Lily's, so-
Those are just regular pumps, they're not grinder pumps, correct Cory?
Um, what is a grinder pump?
Well, there's three grinder pumps, that's what I was just wondering, okay. So anyways, the pumps we got from Lily's, so last week, last meeting, somebody talked about finding out how much it would be to scrap them versus fixing them. So Lily, is this all three?
Yeah, that's all three.
All three is fifty-eight dollars if we scrap them.
How many tons?
It says eight hundred and forty pounds and it's times, uh, point zero seven cents.
Where would the, where'd the quote go from?
No fees.
No fees. We gotta take them off the trailer and everything what we're operating that.
And that's gas price. Gas, gas iron.
Yeah.
And that's all they're paying for?
Yeah.
That's it.
It's probably infiltrated with other types of metals, uh, besides gas iron. They have to disassemble and take them apart.
That's what we're gonna find out, the rebuilding, rebuildables, cause basically, I believe you're the one that was mentioning last meeting that would it be worth us to rebuild them or scrap them?
The one pump I don't think is salvageable.
No.
Really?
The grinder pump, I do believe we can rewind that, because the motor's gonna need rewinding.
Okay.
Plus, it's gonna need new seals, um, on the inside, but, yeah, that, that could be rebuilt.
One could be rebuilt?
Yeah.
Scrap one, just for change in our pocket?
I mean, that-
And what about the third one?
The third one, the third one might be able to be, be rebuilt also.
Okay, so basically we just need to find out how much the cost is gonna be to rebuild them?
Yeah.
Alright.
Versus the cost to do it.
And they were returned from Lily's, why, why did Lily have them?
He was gonna rebuild them.
Three years ago. And he never did, or whatever. He was waiting till this winter, till it was done, till the winter was gone, so we can work on it. That's what he said at one of the meetings. Alright, so that was-
Yeah, what's the, the prices for, brand new versus the rebuilt?
I'm still trying to get there, I'm still trying to get one.
The rebuild-
No numbers, no numbers in them.
No numbers.
Brand new one, you have a price for brand new one, don't you? Don't we have a price for brand new one?
Grinder, yeah.
The grinder, one of the pumps we do, because we're purchasing one right now.
No, no, that's, that's a residential grinder pump that's going out.
Ooh, so it's-
That could be sold out to customers.
Okay, alright, so yeah, so that's what he's still working on, cause they just got him not too long ago, that from, um-
That's the two numbers you'd like to look at.
Yeah.
Rebuild cost versus brand new cost.
Yeah, sir?
I have a question, uh, when a resident needs a grinder pump, like if it's a rebuilt pump, are you gonna charge them the full cost of the new pump, or are you gonna just cost them?
It depends on what the cost is to rebuild.
Yeah.
Because of this-
Yeah, that's what's too terrible, you're gonna pay them a re-
We're not gonna turn around and put a brand new price on an old, it's like buying an old car and saying, well, you're still gonna pay forty thousand, no. No, we're not gonna cheat our own people.
Yeah.
Alright, so-
So are we moving that number, item number three, are we moving that to old business, or tabling it for now until we have a quote?
Yeah, we're gonna table that until they get the opportunity to do what they need to do. And I did, I let Cory know, if they could tell me what's wrong with it, I'll take the time out to make the phone calls if necessary. I just don't wanna sound like an idiot when I call, like I just did with the grinder pump, no.
Alright, so the residential, uh, grinder pumps?
Yes.
You should have a quote over there that indicates what that was, what we got. Oh, it was actually the invoice, it's the actual invoice that we got.
So it's two, the total is two thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents coming from WC Wheel, is that what it was? Wow.
A lot of people just don't know what the grinder pump is. I think grinder pumps are made for below grade where the sewer line runs. They grind the material and then pump it up into the main sewer line. A lot of people didn't know that, I would imagine.
So we have purchased this already, correct?
Yep, it's already purchased, it's, it, it has been delivered at the point of-
Alright, so all we need to do is make up a receipt?
Right.
And figure out what we're gonna do as far as what we're gonna charge, correct?
Yes.
Hey, you guys, what do you, we got the charge, the price of this grinder pump?
Right.
We now gotta figure out what we're gonna charge them. So are we gonna do like blaver, we're, are we installing the whole kit and caboodle, or just?
Uh, not for install, but just purchase of the grinder pump.
Purchasing?
Yeah.
Alright. Give me some ideas. I know we talked about it at one time, charging three thousand dollars.
I'm thinking anywhere from twenty-seven hundred to three thousand.
Okay.
Anywhere between that.
Alright. Um, we definitely have to make sure we have a paper trail.
Yep, receipt.
Yeah, the receipt, so Cory had given us a receipt with a quote from, I don't know if it was these people. I went through all my papers and I couldn't find it, so I was wondering if we could do something like a receipt like that, you know, J Township, yada, yada, yada. And then a secretary, if they're paying you, whoever gets the money, the customer and whoever releases it, so we have all three people's names on it. Because I believe we did run into some issues years ago with not knowing whether-
About, you know what, and let me just rehash this one, one more time, when everyone thinks that we did run into issues, we had, eh, this has been discussion, I can't tell you how many times, I've been here a year and four months, and I think we've talked about it a little bit at every meeting. Um, I finally was able to go back far enough, because there was talk about a grinder pump that went out of our possession, no one knew what happened to it. Someone took it, someone gave it to a resident, no one knew what happened to it. We were never charged for it, we never got paid for it and all of that, well, I was only going back and looking two years, I wasn't going back to two thousand and nineteen. So when I did go back to two thousand and nineteen, there was a woman that used to work here for about a six week or something time period. So I went through QuickBooks back to where she was on payroll. When I saw that she was on the payroll, then shortly right before that, there was a payment for, on ten-four of two thousand and nineteen, for twenty-six hundred dollars, we did get paid for the grinder pump. So everyone can take that off of their mind and know that we did get paid for it, we did not give anything away for free, and everything has been accounted for.
Correct.
Let me ask this question. Who owns the grinder pump? Because if the resident pays three thousand dollars for a grinder pump, when that fails, is the resident on that pump?
Yes.
Yeah, they say so.
Okay, so then-
Is there warranty or anything on it?
Once again, why are you taking them back and rebuilding them? Does the resident sign a release for that, or how's that done?
The grinder pump that we were interested in getting rebuilt, it's from Scattered Town Pump Station.
It's not a-
Oh, it's not a grinder pump.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole bunch of grinder pumps we're talking about.
Okay, I thought you were talking about grinder pumps for residents.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I missed it.
They wanna have, Cory, they would like to have- Yeah, they would like to have one or two on, on hand, but then we have all these other ones we're trying to figure out to rebuild or scrap.
Well, each pump station's different, I mean, as far as the hydraulic hand lift, the ones down in the Calabany Pike are different than Scatters.
So who's gonna work on that and, um, we have to figure out, so we'll say about twenty-eight hundred?
I mean, I, I mean, I personally feel like twenty-seven hundred, I mean, there's not a lot involved with, I mean, it's, we have an invoice for twenty-five, twenty-five, I mean, if it goes up ten percent, we still are covered at twenty-seven hundred.
Wait, wait, wait.
Make it a, a cost of the invoice plus a percentage, next week the cost of the grinder pump's gonna change.
Okay.
So if you just say, plus fifteen percent for handling, so then-
Well, that's what a handling storage, we'll deliver it to, correct? Are we delivering the grinder pump today?
Well, I'll call it.
Go ahead.
If you look at the cost of the pump from a, from a storage point of view, you might buy a pump in January and three years from now, you're never, ever going to sell it or, or use it maybe in three years, might be in six months, might be in three years. But over those three years, you've paid for that pump, that's coming out, those twenty-six hundred dollars, you're accounting for. That's money that you've never been able to spend because that pump sat in storage. So-
So you're charging the current rate?
You guys are talking about taking twenty-five percent of what you have in the bank and putting it on the shelf? It's not gonna work.
No.
The problem is all the pump stations, you have to have a backup on hand for all, that's rules.
T, that's DEP, yeah.
DEP rules. Do we have a pump for every station?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's all you gotta have.
I understand that we're talking about a residential grinder pump. I think we probably should have one installed.
We, we actually do, that's what we're discussing, we just-
That's the one that was delivered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to figure out is-
Somebody's pump goes down and hey, I gotta go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Let's go, let's get it fixed. I think personally, I, I would charge twenty, twenty-eight fifty, that's my opinion.
I think it should be current price, plus a percentage.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we charge twenty-eight fifty for the pump. I think we should-
I'm gonna get a motion, we do the current cost at the time.
Plus a percentage.
Plus fifteen percent.
That's good, yeah.
There's an expert that just talked, or she knows all about pipes and plumbing and all kind of things.
Are we good with current cost and fifteen percent?
Yeah, current cost, we're making a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Please do.
Three years from now.
So we're doing the current cost plus fifteen percent, I'm making the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Does anybody know how many residential grinder pumps are on the system?
I'd say about five.
No, all of California's.
No, all of Caligoni is.
I didn't know the sewage authority was responsible for our less residential grinder pump.
There's only few.
Trying to keep the same brand of pump. I always thought maybe grinder pump, they called the plumber and they got a grinder pump and they.
They, sometimes they did, but they had said that their location would be a lead time.
They had a good steward up in the block of the hill.
Okay, I'm just trying to find out, just. Okay, the next thing we have, a letter from Holly, our operator. And I'm gonna try and place this in Cory's lap for him to make the decision of the question that was posed, okay? I've already made him aware. So, um, this is, Lisa sent this letter out to Holly about hanging around and helping Cory out since he's gonna be licensed soon. And instead of having the nine hundred and fifty dollar fee, she's, Holly has suggested two hundred and fifty. So let me read everything and then you guys, you guys have copies of everything?
Maybe. No, the residents do not. The board members have a copy of the letter.
Okay, I'm allowed to read this?
Yep.
Okay.
Read whatever you want.
It says, okay, good morning, I'm, this is from Lisa, um, write, written request for a water reading.
Nope, wrong one.
Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. Too many letters. Okay, Holly, this is a question that is presented to me by Jamie. We're anticipating Cory to get approved for his license from D E P this month and becoming a licensed operator. If all goes as planned, I foresee him still needing assistance from time to time. Is there an hourly wage you would be willing to help out, help out for? Um, I am not exactly, what? I am not sure exactly what direction the board wants to go on this. I would like to have more facts before the meeting. And I, I know we currently pay nine hundred and fifty dollars a month. Just wondered if you are willing to be backup and how much it would, you would need to be paid to keep that capacity. So Holly's.
Wait, did you say that's from Jamie or?
No.
Holly.
From Lori.
It's from Lisa.
It's from Lisa.
Yep.
Going to Holly. Jamie made a suggestion.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this is what Holly wrote. She said, I would like for all you to see this. Hold on. Wrong place. Says Holly, Lisa, thanks for reaching out with that question. I'm happy to help during Cory's transition if needed. In the past, I've found that hourly rates is very difficult to keep track of, especially when someone is trying to text, phone or email for an inquiry. Also, there's always avoidance of reaching out due, um, by the employee 'cause they're concerned about incurring costs for their employer. The best option is a monthly flat rate. As purely as a consultant and being taken off the D E P register as an operator for the J Township, I would charge two hundred and fifty a month. Basically what she's saying is in order to be the backup for Cory, instead of being paid nine hundred and fifty dollars a month for the operator, she'd be two hundred and fifty dollars a month for Cory to reach out to her and ask questions if needed. This would allow me to be available to help Cory, to help Cory with any needs he may have. It does not include site visits. If I am in the area for my other sites, I'm happy to stop in. We could start the agreement on the month of April and it can be terminated at any time by either party before the beginning of the next month. Now, she also states that Cory has the ability to reach out E A D S group to ask for help. You may wanna weigh their services to help Cory continue on with his work. So I asked Cory, I mean, it's hard for us to make a decision as a board since we don't do the job, we don't know where Cory stands. So I'm with talking to Cory.
I think that's why is the keeper on.
All right. Wish she much help yesterday or the day before.
Not, I mean, back and forth phone calls, but other than that.
You talked to her yesterday or the day before? And that's, that's what this consulting thing primarily is.
Yes. Yeah, and she, and there's no guarantee she's always gonna be here, just like if you need her, you can call her. So any motion to keep her on at two fifty based on Cory's wants and needs?
I make the motion to keep her on.
Okay. Anybody want to second it?
I have a question for Cory. Is she a, a good help to you?
Yes.
Is she accurate and on time?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lori? Yeah, you can do nothing. Lori's opposed. Do you wanna give reasoning or not?
I'm not comfortable with the E A D S group, which is free to answer questions for you.
They're not free.
Yes.
Oh, it's not free?
Yeah, that's not free.
Yeah.
Tom, what's your hourly rate is on?
It's not necessarily, um, I'm not comfortable. It's just the D E P part of it, um, submitting, uh, basically all my lab results and everything, you know, the computer. Like if I have a malcompliance or something like that, I just have someone to ask to go off of.
Cause you're a wonderful guy and I know a lot of times you're on your own figuring it out. That was what was told to you. And I just wanna say that everybody, when you're doing a great job. Okay, that two fifty's just gonna be consultant on the phone. If she has to come down on a site or anything else, it's gonna be additional charges.
Can we find out what the additional charges would be if she came down so we have a better understanding?
We can. I mean, I don't know that she, has she had to have a site visit in the last year, Cory?
Um, normally she, she'd come down once a month.
Okay.
To do the permitting stuff, but other than that, no.
But you're.
Well, I think it's a good question. I think it should be found out what.
I can ask, yep.
But essentially be canceled in time.
But if you go by an hourly rate, if you don't need her, we're not paying for it.
Yeah, to then find out if it's portal to portal.
So we just, so I need to ask her, in the event of a site visit, what is she gonna charge us?
Yes.
Correct.
All right. So you got your backup. Utilize it.
I have a question. Who does Holly work for?
Holly is.
What company is?
York State Farm is over here.
Right now she's.
At Broadway?
No, not at Broadway. On state college. She used to work at Broadway. Right now she's, she has a license.
She's on her own, is she on her own, this girl? Her own company?
No, she's working for a plant down in, she's a state college student. Um, right now she has her license annual wall, so she's doing all the, or getting, or getting ready to.
But he's gonna be the top down.
So she's employed by this company in state college, yeah, okay.
And with her being employed with that company in state college, is she available during her hours that she's working with them?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we got the Holly situation.
Sounds like, yeah.
All right. Um, we need to review the Triple H and the W C Will.
Wild.
Did it say it right? Wild. Quotes for installation for the fourth pump obtained through grant money.
So you should have copies of those. They should be stapled together. It'll be, the first one is the.
January.
Quote that we had from Mr. Brennan from Allegheny Electric. You all had already seen that, but I just included it so that everybody can see it again.
Forty-two fifty?
Yeah.
The second page is the quote from the Triple H. That's who Allegheny Electric recommended to Cory to help with the installation of the pumps. The third quote is the, sorry Cory, the third quote is the W C Wild quote that they initially had given us for the whole.
Kit and caboodle.
Yes.
It's obvious to me. Number one and two is the pick. Allegheny Electric's been around for a while, they're just helping.
So we make a motion?
I'll make the motion. We picked, uh, for this pump installation and control unit Allegheny Electric and Triple H pump and.
Kurt's.
Now, who did Kurt come?
Kurt, good. He's still waiting here back on the gate. So Kurt's gonna come down one day.
We're gonna approve that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking him a question. Uh, yes, I'll, I'll prove.
Aye.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kurt's gonna come down one day. Um, I still don't know when that is because he's still hung up at some other job. Um, I believe he's working at a factory right now. But, once he gives us a date, he's gonna come down and do the P L C one day, um, all the P L C installation. And then we're gonna pick another day. That way, Triple H and Allegheny Electric come down, they wire the motors in and also install the pumps. So.
Both companies in one day.
Yeah.
All right, so what is, was it December we brought up the health insurance for Cory?
We need number seven.
Number seven? Was that it? I don't even have that. Oh, you know what? I have mine for my email.
Yeah, anytime I email anything, there can be changes. So always rely, always rely on the ones that are printed on the table at the last minute 'cause I made a change right at, John came in at noon. I made a change right at noon.
Um, discuss waiving.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. Um, you have here twenty-five hundred dollars that was collected from last month's meeting on delinquencies.
Yeah.
What's the total number of us? What's the, what's the total money outstanding minus that twenty-five hundred?
Um, well, I don't have it in front of me 'cause usually I do that right after I do the billing and I haven't done the billing this month. So I don't, last, it was about fourteen thousand. So it's a constantly moving number. So.
Yeah, how long, how long do you let that go?
How long do I let it go? Not long. Um, I do, I usually send out delinquencies. I send them out every three months. But I make phone calls every single month that I don't send delinquencies and either work out a payment plan with people or, um, so last year we collected, I don't know, it was about, I think between, we collected an additional forty thousand dollars last year compared to the years before. Now, that wasn't all delinquencies. That was just, some people had not been set up correctly in the system. There were some people that weren't getting charged when they should have been getting charged. There were some people that were on a camp rate when they should have been a regular rate. So all of these things have gone through. I've gone through them with a fine tooth comb. And I can give you that number at the next meeting, but I had quite a bit to go through this time. So I don't have that. If I would have done the billing this month, I would have had that number for you, but I don't.
And that takes us into number seven.
Yeah, it does. Yep.
Okay, discuss waiving the late fee for the February twenty-twenty-two billing. Not able to obtain water readings due to computer issues.
Yes.
We will on that. Make a motion?
Make a motion.
Definitely.
Okay.
Yes. All right, all in favor?
I'm sorry, who's seconded that?
John.
I'll take it.
Okay, John, thank you.
What's being done to resolve the computer issues?
Um, well, a lot. Um, yeah.
That sounds good.
Yeah, there's just been a lot of things that have come up that have played into it. So Jamie, I believe, is gonna go. Um, the computer guy was tied up today in meetings. She tried to do it yesterday. Uh, I think it was yesterday, day before, I don't even know. They're all running together. But anyhow, um, she went up and tried to do it and there was an issue with, some of the things weren't lining up.
Okay, so it's being addressed.
It is being addressed, yes. So Troy, yeah, who we have the software through is supposed to, I think, I don't know if he's calling in with her, but she's going to correct it. Once she gets corrected, she'll have him put it on a thumb drive for me and then I.
So we're basically waiting for the water.
We're still on one. Yes.
To get her.
Yes. So once they get their billing done, then they'll give them to me. Usually they bill the month before and then I bill the month after for the readings. So that's how it goes. It's usually like, so they were to bill in January, I get the readings for February. Then March, you know, April, they would bill, then I would bill in May, you know.
Does it, have letters been sent out about, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
Have letters been sent out letting people know about the computer issue and that's why they haven't received their bills? Does anybody know?
They didn't send no, we didn't send no waters out.
Okay, no, not for me.
I, I figured not for you, from the Water Authority, 'cause I know my husband was chewing at the bit. I've heard a few people at the bar chewing at the bit. So we might wanna, I'm, it's not my authority. Might wanna let them know that we had a computer glitch and due to, due to that, we're not gonna charge any, but y'all ain't gonna charge any of their late fees since everybody's nibbing at the bit.
Well, can, can in fact you put a note on that bill when you do, no late fees?
My cards are only so big. So I have about, I think I have about twelve to twenty characters. So if you, if someone wants to tell me what they wanna put in that twelve to twenty, like.
No late fee.
Sorry.
No late fee. Just don't.
No late fee. I mean.
Late fee waived or whatever.
Well, the.
I hope late grits.
I don't wanna say the issue with that is.
I hope late grits because otherwise it's gonna say no fees.
Yeah. My issue with that is that I'm afraid that if I put that on there, then I might not get payments in. So I, you know, I just figured out as they call, then I'll address it.
Okay. Do the Water Board get any calls?
Oh, yeah, we got to call.
'Cause as I told my husband, I said, call the Water Board and some talk to me.
Good night, Bob.
Bye.
You have two different prices on there.
And now they're really.
Just keep the same price and go there.
Now, you can't. You can't. I mean, when you, when you print it, it's, the system, our system is older. So it, all it'll do is it will just waive, we have to just waive the late fees and I'll make the adjustment.
You're gonna have to, anybody who pays the late fee, you're gonna have to adjust that the following month.
No, no. What I do is if they pay the late fee, it just comes off of their next bill.
Yeah, that's what I just said. You have to adjust it the following month.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't make an adjust, no, I mean, there are ways that I make an adjustment. This would not be me making an adjustment. It would be me just putting it in as a credit. So that is.
Makes sense.
Yeah, 'cause I can make an adjustment, but I'm not gonna adjust six hundred and twenty-seven.
Hey, this girl's on top of it. She knows what she's talking about.
I try to, I don't know.
Sounds like.
I saw. Thanks. Thanks, Joe.
I got that one as sick as. I believe it was back in December when we made Cory full time, they were talking, we talked about, um, health benefits. But now we're getting ready to get taken over. So now we're kind of in limbo. So we need to figure out what we're gonna do. Now, I spoke to Mr. Getze personally, Nicholas Insurance, when he put the, um, quote out there. We have two options. One is, um, give Cory the two hundred dollars to put in his check and break it up over the four, the pay period. And he can find his own insurance. If he stays on his parents' insurance, it's the same thing. He's not taking the insurance from here. He's, he can still pocket the two hundred dollars, but we're gonna be taken over. I don't know how that's gonna affect all that brouhaha.
Well, until how old?
Twenty-six. He's twenty, he's got six years. So would you rather?
I'll just stay on my parents for.
Stay on and just take the two hundred in the paycheck?
Yeah, wait, see what happens with the information, see if they come in.
Make sure they come in.
Yep.
And if they don't, then we'll go ahead and, all right. All in favor was, oh, sorry.
I make a motion.
Okay. Second motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay, so that is an additional two hundred dollars in Cory's check and that begins when?
It can begin the next pay period. And he'll stay. It can be broken up through, if you guys get paid biweekly, it can be broken up that way or whatever.
That's two hundred dollars per month.
Mm-hmm. And then, are we all good? We can adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? I second it. All in favor? Who made the motion? I'm sorry, Penny and me.